Good evening, I now call this meeting order. I'm not sure everyone has a copy of that. And with that said, Aaron Hopper.
And you board members, my name is Aaron Hopper and fifth grade teacher at Southside. Current residence is 5416 Cub Drive in Auburn. I just wanted to take a moment to share with you some data from our fifth grade cohort group through some of our state testing, non-specific data because we're not quite there yet, but also with our I-Ready initiatives that we do follow parity, snowball. I'm not sure whether you are aware or not, but fifth graders are not always the easiest subjects to motivate or to get to cooperate. And this year, we have worked really hard to build some relationships with our kids to get them to be invested in really doing their best instead of saying, "This is just a computer program, I don't want to do this." And I wanted to share with you some of that data. In my classroom cluster, please understand this is not a congratulations, this is Hopper. That's not at all what that is intended to be. But I'm really proud of our kids and we have some really amazing teachers and staff members working with our kids and I think sometimes we tend to focus on the negative. So, in my cohort group, indeed percent of my students passed their, or met their typical growth in math and forty percent matched their stretch growth. According to I-Ready norms as a part of our, what we have received from the company, approximately fifty percent of students are expected to meet that typical growth rate and twenty-five to thirty percent are expected to meet the stretch growth. Again, for my students in math this year, it's eighty percent matched typical growth, sixty-eight percent of my students matched typical growth, and fifty-two percent matched stretch growth. When we look at I-Learn testing across the state, I hear a lot of things that students are consistently, East Noble students are underperforming that at our state as compared to our state levels. Again, I can only speak for my classroom. Fifty-eight percent of my students passed I-Ready reading assess, or excuse me, I-Learn reading assessment this year and sixty-four percent passed I-Learn math assessment compared to the state average, which is about forty percent. So, again, thank you for the ability to come to these, to come to our school and teach every day, to spend time with kids in our community. There are great things happening here and even though great things don't happen every single day, today was kind of...
I'm sorry about your time.
Thank you.
April Moore.
Hello. April Moore, I'm right here, you can go though. As the school year draws to an end, I just wanted to remind everybody that this school serves all students, not just my kid, not just your kid, but all kids. We need to make sure that we're doing so in an inclusive and supportive manner, so I do thank you for working your hardest to get those policies to be such that. And I also want to thank the teachers for providing that quality education, many times going above and beyond to provide learning activities for our students that are enriching. I'm also thankful for providing the town hall style meeting earlier this week, although it was not the first, but that for East Noble was the first one I could attend. I appreciate the forward back and forth conversation with the school board members and the administration, and I look forward to being able to attend future events. Thank you guys so much.
Charlie Barber.
Charlie Barber, I live at 336 U.S. Street in Auburn, but I've been teaching here for a while time. I actually have an errand that I'm doing because Jen Wells was not able to attend this evening and Mrs. Wells is the yearbook sponsor at the high school and she wanted me to publicly announce the list of ads that she gave me. I don't know if this is a complete list, so if there's something that got left off, I apologize. Because the yearbook relies on the sales of ads to local businesses and parents to provide for our students a lower-cost yearbook, without the, without the support of local businesses, the yearbook would easily be over a hundred dollars. The following businesses purchase ads for the 2024 yearbook and Mrs. Wells wanted this publicly announced. Noble County Disposal, Young Family Funeral Home, the St. James Restaurant, Community State Bank, Jansen Law Office, Century Twenty-One, Bradley Hestine, Shepherd's Family Auto, Hyatt Funeral Home, Chase Anderson, Dr. Roush and Will Optometrist, Don Gura State Farm, Jansen Family Chiropractic, the Tipton Lawn Group, Parker Funeral Home, Luther Machine and Tool, Champ's and Tramp's Brewing, BJ Medical, Outback Photography, the Freedom Academy, Don Chico's Mexican Restaurant, John Lay Monument Sales, J.O. Morey, Reliable PMW Performance Diesel and Service Repairs, LaGrange Family Dentistry, Big B Coffee and Avila, the Deco Investment Company, Snyder's Lock &amp; Key, Lake Town and Country Realty and Graphic Packaging. Like I said, if there's somebody who was not on this list, I apologize, I'm reading what she gave me, so please don't shoot the messenger. And yes, the yearbook is one of those things that students look forward to every year with the way, with, as well, especially the way that it's been the last number of years, they're doing things, they're up until June 2nd and then Mrs. Wells and a couple of kids finish it off either on the 3rd or the 4th and get everything set, which means they're getting stuff back in the vault, so. And then they do their best to get things to the seniors. As well, making sure you're aware, we start finals on Friday, seniors do their first final on Friday, then we do the rest of the underclassmen finals on Tuesday and Wednesday. Seniors do one on Wednesday, then they have their senior breakfast, then they go to graduation practice, and then they go home. So, as far as, as well, in the midst of that, on Friday, the last few years, Mrs. Longabod has been able to get sponsorship from community businesses that we do an all-school picnic and make sure that everybody gets fun and games and hot dogs and so forth. Because we're almost into finals, yes, we're taking academic lab to give the kids a little bit more time to have fun.
Anne Frey.
Anne Frey, 68 East Noble grad, retired teacher, former East Noble ALC employee. I live in Fort Wayne, I'm speaking on public education. To improve education, legislators ought to rely on the words of teachers. This is the advice of educational experts, Jess Swanson, retired superintendent professor, and Michael Schaefer, Ball State professor of educational leadership. They are deeply concerned because legislators and others are pushing personal ideologies and politics into instruction. Per the Ball State experts, "Good teaching," quote, incorporates accuracy, honesty, integrity, and pluralism, end of quote. We do not intimidate teachers for doing public education. The local school board has to be courageous, as it stands for the common good, and must be alert to misinformation and disinformation. When board members love East Noble and work as a team, they can counteract nonsense so rational thinking can prevail. A parent or community member practicing responsible citizenship is respectful and fact-finding. She is not prone to absurd exaggerations. Her time and effort is spent gathering unbiased information to support her claim or request. She, of course, is concerned with her own child or children, but not to the exclusion of the rest of the student body. There's nothing wrong with fact-based challenges and thoughtful debate, but there is something wrong when a small group with a personal agenda hijacks meetings over and over again. For the past several months, I have been here in support of public education, the East Noble School Board, and the staff. The bottom line is, I wanted to give more balance to the comments section. Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
John Fawcett.
Good evening, board. John Fawcett, Rock City. I want to start out by saying a few thank yous, so to the members of the board who've been willing to meet me in person, thank you. To David Theresa for meeting me regarding parental informed consent on books, thank you. To Theresa for replying to my library selection criteria questions and the arrest of a teep, the arrest of a teacher, thank you. To Brian for replying to me about the ALC financials, thank you. I regret I didn't have time to get back to you, but I greatly appreciate what you shared. Also, thanks to the board for providing the word packets 24 hours in advance in the meeting. Thanks for the echo cues, they're building up nicely. Thank you for providing current and insights into the materials which will be used in the classroom next year and giving them plenty of time to consider them. And thank you for the town hall meetings earlier this week. Avila was especially handled very positively and professionally and I'm very grateful for the leadership. What I would ask you to carefully consider is a few of the following things. You will vote tonight on policies that respect parental rights such as teaching human sexuality. Yet there's an irony here because at the same time, we continue to vote to deny parents the right of informed consent for books in the library that teach sex in a much more graphic way without any supervision at all, such as descriptions of deep penetration, self-pleasure, the sign that a girl's lost her virginity, male fluids and their taste, how to prolong sex, and the benefits of shaving. Yet you don't teach those of human sexuality under the guidance of a teacher, you will hand a book to a kid to read. The reason given to deny these parental rights are quite disappointing. As a whole, we vote to deny parents the right, their right to deny access to those obscene materials if just a few pages of a 200-page book contains them. Then we suggest complaint has no merit because the parent has to read the entire book for themselves and enrich the author and the publisher in the process. And then we say that trust resources are not valid to be used to expose the books obscene content as a basis for a complaint. That's like saying you should never use a computer to do a research paper or all your math has to be done without a calculator. But tonight, that's not my main concern. My main concern is a policy that you're proposing tonight to deny appeals for books for five years. I think we should consider the consequences of this. While I can understand that we have to have some reasonable process so that the process is not abused, you are taking the rights away from other people. I ask that you please consider revising this to two years to match the election cycle so that we don't deny new representatives and new parents and other new administrators the opportunity to weigh in. One other topic I want to cover tonight, I have no time, but the title line is very important to us, so respectfully, please, by request, that you hear these words and not consider them from me, but just as a...
Greg Rice.
Good evening, board. Greg Rice, Fort Wayne, Indiana. I want to chat real quick about policy in the meeting the other night at the town hall. I stand here before an elected group of publicly elected school board members. Our school board members run for office, they are government officials, and constituents elect them based on a number of factors. I am in charge of making policy for our schools, as you all know. So, policy is made by a school board member who is a public and government official who is elected by constituents. In my experience, on Monday, the town hall meeting was not very pleasant as I asked a specific question regarding a policy decision and I was met with a lot of friction. You can see that on the video that we have posted on Engage. You can see the full version, or you can start at the 24-minute and 21-second mark to see how the controversy unfolded. I simply asked a question regarding a policy decision because that's what school board members do, they make a policy. And I believe it was a correct forum, it was a laid-back forum, we certainly can't ask those questions here and get answers, but this forum, as I understood it, was a back-and-forth forum where we did talk to our board members one-on-one and our superintendent one-on-one. But for my doing so, and you can see it on the video, I was polite, I was pleasant, I even spoke about positive things that were going on within our school corporation at the beginning. And then I asked my question. I read a statement from one of our board members regarding her vote on the stolen life book and I simply asked a question regarding policy. I was shut down. I was told that my questions were a personal attack. You can see the video, you can see where the personal attack began when the board member told me, and I have to quote it as closely as I can for purposes of this meeting, but you can see it on the video. I was told... Facebook Messenger is not the appropriate place for a recommendation! I know it sounds goofy to be sending up here, but that's what was said to me, okay? I'm the one making a personal attack. Really? I don't understand. My question was regarding policy decision. And for that, I was shut down and I was threatened to be removed from that meeting if I would continue. Is that democracy, folks? Think about it. Dave, I wonder what the other guy would say? Have a good evening, folks.
With that said, now, a board, in your, in your packet, you have a copy of the minutes from April 24th. You have the chance to review those. At this time, is there a motion to approve those minutes from April 24th? I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Blackman, seconded by Mr. Durbin, to approve the minutes of April 24th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Also, in your packet, were the claims from May 22nd, time to pay the bills. If you had any questions, hopefully you reached out to Brian, any questions about that? If not, we'll take a motion to approve those claims as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Trulow, seconded by Dr. Jensen, to approve the claims from May 2nd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries. Set to zero. Moving to personnel, in your packet, underneath risk, resignation, retirements, and terminations. You have the chance to review those. At this time, is there a motion to approve resignations, retirements, and terminations as presented in your packet?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Klein, seconded by Mr. Trulow, for resignations, retirements, and terminations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Reassignments, we have some reassignments. Perhaps you know that we're now doing reassignments and putting those with movement as well as across the district as well as in individual buildings. So, the teacher was teaching first grade this year and they're being reassigned, perhaps to fifth grade next year, fourth grade, or whatever, those are also coming across, so. Some reassignments out there, questions about that?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
And then a motion by Mr. Durbin, seconded by Mr. Trulow, to approve those reassignments. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Board, your packet, also the new hires. We also had some items we got earlier today. We moved that. If you had a chance to look for that, are there any questions about that? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Durbin, seconded by Mr. Anderson, to approve the new hires as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries, set to zero. Also, in your packet, were leave requests. You have a chance to look through those. Questions about that? If not, is there a motion to approve leave requests?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Klein, seconded by Mr. Durbin, for leave requests as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, that takes us to the instruction. Come on.
Yes, the head of Mrs. Erickson is going to give us an update on the science of reading program progress. So, at the beginning of this school year, I don't know if it was October or November, I met with you guys and we kind of talked about the literacy cadre and kind of where we were going. We were very open with where our reading data was at that time. And I think it's important to show you what has happened in a year since being part of the cadre. So, I just kind of put up the definition of science of reading again because everything that we've done so far this year has kind of been that focus of the science of reading. And it really focuses on phonemic awareness, phon expletive vocabulary comprehension. And I know that Mrs. Hopper shared her I-Ready data with you, but again, with the Lit Cadre of Indiana, they are asking that by 2027, ninety-five percent of all kiddos reach one in reading. So, we know we have a ways to go. So, this bottom, right here is the end of the year, the top part is beginning of the year. So, you saw this part at the beginning of the year for us, kind of where we were with our overall reading scores, right? It did not look necessarily the most pleasant, but if you look down here, this is end of the year for us, just in reading. And this is K5, so you can definitely tell that our red has significantly decreased and that we have definitely grew our green. And the green with the, the actual lines right here, this means that they are mid or above grade level and the light green right here, that just means early on that grade level. So, we definitely have made some strides this year with reading, which I feel is very important for us to celebrate as a school with our kids. So, I kind of wanted to break that down just some other ways, but you'll see this, right here is beginning of the year, it shows you kind of that tier one, and green, kind of to yellow to red, and you can see where we've ended up the year. And again, this is reading K5 when it comes to our reading diagnostic that we took. So, definitely moving in the right direction. I broke it down by grade and I know that you can't really read what it says, but the bottom is window one and the top is window three. And I wanted to do it this way so that you could see that there's been growth in every single grade level. Like, it's not one grade level holds all the growth and it shows, so you can definitely see that we have grown across the board, which I think is awesome. And part of that is exciting for me just because the Lit Cadre really focuses on kindergarten first, second grade, and they allowed us to add third grade. So, the fact that fourth and fifth also grew without all of those same supports, I think is phenomenal. So, I wanted to share the fact that is what we're doing, phonological awareness and phonics working, because that's that focus that we really put in with UFLY. You got to see a UFLY lesson at the beginning of the year. And I, so this is just phonemic awareness, when it, when it, phonological awareness when it talks right here. So, kindergarten, first and second grade, window one, we had only twenty-six percent of our kiddos that were, when it came to phonemes, really understood where they were. And now, if you, I mean, I didn't do the math and so I'm probably a little nervous, so I can't do that in my head, but thirty-eight percent plus forty-nine percent, definitely huge growth to show that our kids are on track with those foundations. So, first grade went from eleven percent to fifty-nine percent, so I feel like that's really awesome. And then second grade went from thirty-eight percent to eighty-two percent. And one of the things that you don't see a lot, certain things there, is that those standards when it comes to phonological awareness should be mastered in first grade. So, it's not something that is a second grade standard, they should know it, but it's only get there. Same with phonics. Phonics is also something that you should already have mastered before you get into third grade, but I kind of added that since these are the cohorts that really worked with KARI and the Lit Cadre this year. So, this is just phonics. So, I already making gains with the programs that we've put into place. In kindergarten, only thirteen percent were kind of where they needed to be in phonics by the end of the year, and now we have forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty percent. So, for kindergarten, eighty percent are where they needed to be when it comes to phonics. That's awesome. First grade, you can see, we only had thirteen percent and now we're at fifty-four percent. And again, I'm just sharing at grade level. You'll notice that here is zeros, I get really excited about those, but you really shouldn't be too excited about those in kindergarten, they can't be two grade levels behind where they need to be, so hopefully you have zeros there. Second grade, we went from thirteen percent to thirty-three percent. So, again, growth, maybe not as much growth as we wanted in that particular area, but then that lets us find out why. Third grade, where they should already have mastered phonics, we have twenty-four percent, we went to fifty-one percent. So, definitely have made growth. It shows us that what we are doing with UFLY and HEDG is working. So, that's exciting. So, this is just because I wanted to show you, at the beginning of the year, we talked about the skills checklist that we're doing for our kiddos. And I just taking one snapshot so you could see where this line is right here, these are all kindergarten standards that they should master by the end of kindergarten, okay? So, this was a kindergarten, beginning of the year is BOY. This is the same group of kids and that's where the cream you see. So, that's awesome. First grade, same thing, that was beginning of the year. That's the end of the year. So, granted, we know that they have holes from kindergarten, so you have to fill those first before you can work on those first grade skills that they needed. Second grade, the same thing. You will see that they definitely made growth. Some kids obviously still have some holes, we need to figure out why. Is it because they process things differently? Is there something else happening? And you kind of have to move on from that tier one instruction to really look at tier two, what are you doing for those kiddos? Third grade, beginning of the year, same group of kids. Fourth grade, I don't know why, I don't have a beginning of the year one in there for them, but this is kind of where they ended. And a lot of our kiddos in fourth and fifth grade that we use the checklist for are kiddos that might be in MTSS, or they're also some of our special education students. So, we wanted to make sure that, just because they're already receiving services through special education, they still need to grow with our tiers that we're doing in the classroom. Fifth grade, same thing as far as the special education students, MTSS, and you can see that they make gains definitely in those phonics areas. So, again, I just wanted, since we showed you the beginning of the year and we've definitely put some, you know, finances and things in place for what we're doing with phonics, that we really have made gains. So, that's what I wanted to do.
I've got a question.
Okay.
On the standards at the beginning of the year versus the end of the year. Is it the same testing at the beginning of the year as the end, or is it expected to get...
Correct, you're expected to grow.
More difficult.
Correct. So, you will find, when you look, and granted, this is just for you, so when you look at, when they take that I-Ready diagnostic, there are kids in reading or with phonics that maybe know more than what that grade level is. So, a lot of times you see maybe kids who are higher at the beginning of the year in reading than math, because math, those skills are like stair-step. So, really, do you know fourth grade math before it's been taught to you? So, it really gives you that beginning of the year, fourth grade, how are you on as far as grade level content? So, it does get harder, like they're assessing your, what have you mastered for that, that particular grade level.
Thank you.
Are these the tests that, when you take them, then they just get the questions, each question, question is more difficult, more difficult?
Correct, or it'll get easier if they miss somebody, correct.
So, you know right now whether they've had growth or not?
Correct.
I just, my comment is, thank you so much, because you get it in the beginning of the year, and it's nice to see at the end of the year how great this is and how much work the kids put in, your teachers put in.
We're definitely moving in the right direction.
Yeah, it's exciting, this. Yeah, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is, East Noble High School football team has requested overnight summer camp typically. Our seniors have the opportunity to travel and in addition to traveling and doing some fun activities and an awful lot of things that are in that direction, is providing leadership with seniors and presented with some leadership activities to learn about leadership. And they have asked for us to vote to approve their annual trip. I think they've been going out a long time. A long, long time. they've been going out a long time, a long, long time, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the football trip.
Yeah.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Blackman, seconded by Mrs. Klein, for a football overnight trip for our seniors. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Alright, at this time, we will suspend our, we will suspend our typical meeting and move into a public hearing in regards to additional appropriations. We had the opportunity at April's meeting to chat about moving forward to this point. Our, our articles have been presented and published in the newspaper. Mr. Reese, do you have those dates?
Yes, they're published in, we can have news on May eighth, or May fifteenth. We also have posted useful website on May eighth. We also have public notices in public buildings, which is the central office, the Southside Elementary, and Easton High School as of May eighth.
Okay. Well, it's, it's our hope that we will fund these projects through the issuance of general obligation bonds, and we've got the opportunity to look through those. At this time, we've been asking to sign in, but if you'd like to speak to just the alternative learning center proposals for additional appropriations, we certainly welcome those comments. You have three minutes. If you'd like to speak to this kind of whole school, raise your hand.
It's also for the administration.
Correct, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's also in addition to the ALC, HVAIC, the sort of government's corporation office. Sorry, John?
Thank you. As I said earlier, I appreciate that Brian answered my questions, reached out to me, got information. My feedback is not personal towards Brian, and I just have a different sort of opinion, and I hope he reflects that. I'm sure he does. I just, I'm left feeling that we're spending five million dollars to maintain a debt so that the tax rate's not left default, which would then result in having to go back to the voters to go get that money back. I feel like we're really just hunting for someplace to keep our debt high. That's just my personal opinion, like I said. I see challenges coming in the future in regards to, you know, what we're going to do about Title IX and what that means to the facilities. And I think that's going to be awful expensive for some of the proposals I'm hearing tossed around. I think there's better places to spend the money, respectfully thinking.
Anyone else? Okay, alright. So if not, appreciate you for that, John. So at this time, moving forward, we're going to be asking for an additional appropriation resolution. Brian, do you want to speak to that very quickly, or you just need to pack the boards, we have a chance to read that? Brian?
Yeah, so with school finance, not only do you have to have cash, you also have appropriation. The appropriation for the majority of our funds comes in the budget process. Obviously, we're selling these bonds, that will not come through the budget process. So therefore, you have to have additional appropriation here to establish the appropriation to spend the bond money is received. So that's what establishes this meeting tonight. Then we have a public comment, as well as to make a resolution, if you so approve, to move forward to add that additional appropriation resolution.
Were you giving a voice about this for Brian? Had the opportunity in last couple weeks to reach out to him. I know some haven't had your questions answered, I believe. Any questions, thoughts, comments about this? Alright, if not, then we'll entertain a motion and second to adopt the additional appropriation resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Additional appropriation resolution.
I'll second.
We have an appropriate, we have a motion to approve the appropriate additional resolution by Miss Blackman, seconded by Dr. Jensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, then that takes us to the final bond resolution. Had that opportunity also to read that in your packet? Had the opportunity to question, ask questions of Brian? Brian, entertain any of that, or?
The final bond resolution establishes the maximums that can be borrowed, maximum payment, maximum interest rate effect, as established, as mentioned in the previous board meeting.
Okay.
Brian, that is maximums.
It is maximums. It could, it could be lower, yes, correct.
Thank you. Do we have, I mean, I know we're looking, do we have any idea what the bids are out there as far as, not this, but just, are the bids on other projects across the state coming in high, low? Do you have any ideas?
That's, that's very subjective, it's very vague. It's really hard to answer that. There is a fair amount of work being done out there. A few months' refunds have been issued by the federal government over the last couple of years. We're still looking to finish some of those. Working with Mark Coe on several projects in the interim. They've been very good and fairly accurately conservative in their estimated amounts. So I'll hold forward with this remain for those projects as well, but we won't know until we finalize the bids, the spends, to that degree. So I'm optimistic, but that doesn't mean against me.
Sure. Anything else, please? If not, we'll entertain a motion for the final bond resolution. If so, motion out there?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Klein, a second by Mr. Trulow to adopt the final bond resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright. At that time, I'm sorry, at this time, that we can public hearing and we'll continue now with our board meeting. Next up on the agenda, school board policies. Those, we received, had a chance to review those. Many of them are just continuances and updates. We had a chance to review those. I know perhaps we had some questions, we directed those questions, we've got answers. Any questions tonight, or do I add, or?
I just would like to have a clarification on the challenge materials section.
Ninety-one thirty?
Yes, on item H. When it talks about the appeal not available for five years, which is a bit long.
Okay, sure. Um.
Go ahead.
I, I think I can address that in a minute. I had the chance, I've looked at numerous policies from across the state. They range from nothing all the way up to never, open again, literally. And in checking around, you know, five years for us, that was presented. I know there was concern that five years is a long time, you know, between, between that opportunity. At any time, a board member makes say, or asks the policy be reviewed, superintendent may do the same thing. So in regards to election cycles, it was brought up tonight. Sure that a new board member, a new superintendent can't come in and ask that that policy be reviewed. So even though it says five years, it can be changed by a board, or has to be changed by a board member to review. Anything else?
Yes, it's a whole, thank you.
Teresa, anything you'd like to add?
No, I would just say, as all hold, the board has to decide to review.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the school board policies presented.
Yeah, I'll second. We have a motion by Mrs. Blackman, a second by Mr. Anderson to approve as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. Also, you've had the chance to review student handbooks in the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. And we found a couple of typos here and there, got those corrected. You've had a chance to ask some questions. Teresa, one more time, because there's criminal legislation in regards to cell phone policies and attendance with, with laws that will be coming into effect, can we talk a little about that?
Right, we went back to our principles and just said, hey, here's the cell phone policy. It actually was not, I mean, our policy as it stands, I feel like, is very solid. They wanted to keep it. It falls in line with the law, so therefore, that's what we want to keep there, our handbooks. The attendance monitor is still under review with prosecutor's office, and we're not sure where that's going to land. We know right now, we're a little bit more stringent than what the state policy is, so, or what the law has proposed. So we're not really sure where that's going to go, but we want to talk to the prosecutor. So there might come a time that we might have to do amendment to that, but we can do that pretty easily, bring it back to the board, and have them do another read of that. And then we can make the changes and we communicate that out to our stakeholders.
And that goes into effective life orders, is that correct?
Correct.
If you're saying that, then this policy is consistent. It needs to be consistent in every classroom.
Which one?
Cell phone policy.
Yeah.
So each classroom use policy.
The halls.
Not just, you can use it in my class, and you can use it in my classroom. Where's the consist, is there consistency?
Well, the whole law has stated they are allowed to use it if they have permission. Because this isn't just about cell phones, it's about any electronic device. And, but they're trying to keep kids off the cell phone during instructional time. So that's the whole purpose, I believe, behind it. But yeah, it's about keeping them on task during instructional time, so.
Thank you.
No matter how hard the administrators push, do you insist on? It's, it's tough, it's tough, it's tough. Anything else about those student handbooks? If not, we'll retain a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five student handbooks.
I'll second. We have a motion to approve the student handbooks as presented by Mrs. Blackman, seconded by Dr. Jensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All approved. Motion carries, seven zero. Uh, next up, in your packet was our monthly eBay, eBay list to sell, obviously items. I've looked at that, a lot of technology in there this time. Questions about that? And we'll entertain a motion then to approve that list for sale on eBay.
I'll make a motion to approve what's presented.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Trulow, seconded by Mr. Anderson to approve the eBay list for sale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All approved, all opposed. Motion carries, seven zero. That takes us then to our discussion items. To our discussion. Oh no, I, we're going to do that. We're discussion. That's okay. So, why don't you promote a few things on the discussion items?
Yes, our very first topic is verification of English materials. We just want that to take an opportunity, since we're here at a board meeting, to kind of explain where those are at. And it starts on the FAQ, which most of you are aware, it's underneath our school board. And this is how we can quickly ask questions. And if you go to that, it'll take you to the high school page, which you can go down to the menu, which is guidance. And wait, I can't read it from here. Okay. So if you click that on, it will give you the list of what books have been approved for which classrooms. But just know that not all of those will necessarily be used due to time constraints. So if there might be four books listed, the teacher might choose two for that trimester. So they can click on those and get a little bit of excerpt of the book. They can always, I mean, they can look at this all summer if they want. They can look at prior to having those courses. And each parent will consult us at the beginning of the class with a signature list on there. And they'll have three days to return that before distributing any of the books. So that way the parents will have an option. If they choose. Any questions?
On that board?
Most of the books have top lists on there too, not all of them.
And I just want to thank our high school English teachers for putting that together. And I know they had to put some time in to make that happen, so appreciate the work that they did.
Can I agree, Mr.?
So as you may know, a couple weeks ago, we had a storm kind of roll through our area. It wreaked havoc on several homes and buildings and businesses. It was a small size hail. We were affected, as many other residents and businesses within, within the area. We're working with our insurance company. We're working with vendors to come out and help us look at and, and make the staff to establish the extent of the damage. Primarily right now, it's housed at this building, so Southside Elementary, as well as Easton High School. And the main building is in and around the high school. We have damage to roofs, we have damage to vehicles, we have damage to siding, we have water leaks from roof damage that has rained and basically onto our stage lighting, which has caused some damage there. So working through our insurance company, Gallagher Insurance, which is part of Stewart, Peters &amp; Lear. Bill Lear is our local representative. They're working with us to find out, establish where everything is at, what the potential costs are, and then working through repair. It's a very lengthy process, it's a very time-consuming process. Our facilities director, Joe Pastor, and myself, along with maintenance, many others, are working through that process as efficiently as we can. But it's definitely a daunting task. And we're looking to make sure we try and expect as much as we can. We're fortunate that, you know, our fleet of buses was not hit. We had, I think, one broken mirror, which we fixed and house and so forth. But windshield's aren't, roofs, I think, could take those buses on service. So we're very fortunate for that. But we do have, we do have a significant amount of damage that we're working to report and hope to repair in the next few months. So, any questions on the hail damage?
It's bad enough to hear, but at least the transportation, that could have been difficult.
So that night, the, actually, I happen to be in Frenchland for a conference, but that night, a transportation director, a mechanic, came in after the hail blew through to make sure our buses were in working order and they weren't taken out of commission because of the storm, so we could safely transport students the next day. Our maintenance and custodial staff, you know, have been rock stars in making sure that our facilities are in orderly fashion, or in a community school. So I've seen lots of damages to friends' homes and businesses with what we have, while it is, it is a fair amount, we're fortunate to only have what we have. So the vehicle damage is to our maintenance vehicles, which we can, we can work through, so.
And I would just like to add that, you know, Mr. Leach is not really telling like it is on how much time and effort he's put into this, along with our facilities director. So just want to take the time to really praise them for all their efforts, because he's got a lot of other work to do and that has taken priority. So we appreciate that you've done, Brian. Okay, okay.
Alright, so we've been busy, busy, busy trying to get two of the facilities licensed with the state of Indiana, and it is fully licensed, so that we have a quality program. And it also allows us to have scholarships for the state of Indiana. So for our enrollment, the mats we want to go up to is twenty. So currently our enrollment, uh, the mats we, we wanna go up to is twenty students. Legally, we can go up to twenty-four, but we feel that twenty is best practice. Um, we have opened, I don't have it in the house, uh, we had preschool, um, enrollment, thank you. Uh, and could turn out at all three facilities. So Northside currently has seventeen students registered, um, Roma City has fourteen, and the villa is full. And at Northside and Roma City, we are trying to save a few spots in case we have kindergartners who aren't, aren't ready for kindergarten. And we can suggest that they go down to preschool. And you say, well, how do you know? Because they go to kindergarten roundup and we can look at their assessment and talk with their parents and see, are they young for their age, for their age and are they that, that time? And so we try to think of those things long-term, not just, oh, you have this many kids and you're done. Um, if we do have a student that comes in, say, um, starts kindergarten and it's October and they're just not quite ready, uh, we could go past twenty, but our goal right now is to be at twenty, so. Uh, the licensing requirements are pages and pages and pages of things that we have to do. It's everything from getting, um, the directors and teachers all have to have, well, more background checks. So these are fingerprinted background checks. They have to have a TV test, um, they can do a drug screening, they watch twenty hours of training videos. So all these things our principals and pre-K teachers have been doing, it's, it's, it's a lot of work. But they're, they're powering through and going okay. Um, so we've done that, we have hired Anna Robinson for Northside. And then, um, Roma City still needs a teacher. At a villa, we're transferring a teacher in. And all the IAs have been, um, either transferred in or hired. So they're ready to go with staffing except Roma City. Um, we've ordered, we have to have two full classrooms of new furniture, so we have the estimates for that. We're, we're working on that, we just got those this week. Um, on the back, you'll see a diagram of Northside. So the licensing agency comes in, they met with both principals, and they basically tell you, yes, you would pass, or no, you would not. Um, right now, we're at no, you would not, because we had a lot of those things. And they test everything from the temperature of your water, um, if they open drawers, you can't have any, um, chemicals or soap. Or, I mean, it's, it's pretty strict. But one of the things they did not like was the backside of Roma, uh, Northside. So they recommended that we put up a section of fencing. And so the grant that we have, um, allows us to have money to do that. So we're gonna do some of our grant money to pay for it. Uh, we're waiting on a quote right now. And so that's our next step. And then we're also working on curriculum, because the state of Indiana also vets preschool curriculum, um, just like they do all of our other curriculums. So we're going to be looking at that. And then materials and supplies. And yes, it's fun to spend money that's not yours and just to dream and call upon these really cool educational things for kids that they're gonna love. So, that's been the fun part. Um, but just as we move forward, trying to get, you know, spend our money wisely to get to meet all the requirements. And some of the requirements are, they have to have a book section, they have to have a music section, they have to have, um, an art section, you have to have ninety minutes of free choice time. So all those things we're working through, uh, with all the principals, and it's been a good experience. But, um, that's what we sit right now. Any questions?
Will there be a director or a new site, or will one person oversee all three sites?
I oversee all three, um, but then each principal is kinda in charge of that one, I believe. So I do all the paperwork, not all of it, I do some of the paperwork and make sure that we're up on our license. You could, it's, it's like anything in education, it's a lot of paperwork, but they're pretty, um, if you have trouble, you just call them, they're super helpful. They send people out. Because what, as I said back when I, um, applied for this grant, Noble County is struggling to have quality, um, daycare or preschool for our littles. So when we said we were interested in adding a site, they bent over backwards to help us get the grant. I don't know if you remember, but we were the only school district in northern Indiana that got the grant, especially this large. So they are constantly calling me like, well, you need help with, what can I help you with? So, right now, they're trying to get us licensed so we can get our scholarship rolling. Um, I, I have to meet with them once a month, but I, I talk to them at least once or twice a week. So, it's a great relationship, they, they've been so helpful, so.
You mean the fencing, are they talking about the whole perimeter?
No, if you look on the back, um, they were concerned with, they were concerned with, um, just random dogs and cars. And while I disagreed, I just said, okay, if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. She didn't say we won't license you, and I don't know if anybody knows this, but the state of Indiana does recommend it and require it. So I'm just trying to do what's best for kids, and I know little kids and I know Northside, I mean, they're, they have a lot of kids. So sometimes they do have some run, so. We were talking about asking the fence anyways, Brian and I. So I just said, you know what, the timing's perfect and the grant can pay for it. So they gave us plenty of money, so we're gonna use that. Brian's happy. And now he owes me one, so.
That's exciting to see those numbers.
Yes. And they did say they want a site to have a ribbon cutting, because the governor wants to come to his preschool. And I said, what do we have to do to get in here? So, that's my next thing is.
Do you wanna come in on the helicopter?
Maybe.
It's a hot like helicopter, I don't wanna go around.
That would be amazing.
Okay, um, before we move to the Lifewise, I just wanna say, you know, Dr. Wors is, thank her for all her work, but our equipment has really been put in some time as well. She's everything they're doing, they make progress before all of it, so, um, if you see them, they have them, they, they're a little overwhelmed right now. Alright, uh, Lifewise Academy Board, I've been talking to you about that coming. Um, and I did tell them when they all wanted to come to a few of our buildings that we wanted them at all five elementary classes and worked very, very hard for consistency across all of our elementaries. We didn't want anyone to be able to say, well, I wanna go to that one because they have Lifewise and mine doesn't. So, uh, they did go back to the drawing board, they went back and they worked really hard to be able to get all five elementary schools, um, in the program. Uh, they're gonna be starting with fourth grade only. Um, three of the schools will be within walking distance from, to a church where they're going to house the program. Um, and you're well aware, I kinda skipped, but this is a religious ed program. Um, and then, uh, two of them will have to be transported, uh, by bus, or I'm not sure what their transportation looks like, we're still working out all of those details. Um, this won't even take effect until September. Um, we have worked with the principals and, uh, what's her name? Toni Woollievert is the director for our area, and she'll be working directly with our principals. And those people working with our students. Um, but as you are well aware, um, there was a, a new Indiana code. Um, and they are not to exceed a hundred and twenty minutes and not to be taken out of instructional time. So that's been a challenge, let's try to figure out when that is. And it's difficult, but remember, this is by parental permission only. So if they don't want their student, say we choose library, if they don't want their child out of library, then they just don't send them, they don't, um, sign the permission slip. So, um, one of the things that we need to make very, very clear, um, to Lifewise when they come is the law of death state, there may not be any, uh, support either in whole or in part with a public funds. So, one of our people cannot go with them, they can't escort, they can't be part of that because we pay them in our public funds. So, uh, we still have to work through all of that because they're trying to figure out the logistics of how they get the students from our schools to where they are going to house their programs. So I don't have all those answers right now. Um, I've just kinda given you a heads up of when we're looking at. Um, but we're gonna meet, um, again with the principals and with Toni. And, um, we are going to have her come to the July Board Meeting, and she'll do a presentation, hopefully we'll have a little more, more information at that time. Any questions? Hopefully I can answer them, 'cause we have all the presentations.
Did you clarify that one person's twenty minutes, a week, a month?
A week, I'm, I apologize, it's just a week.
Did she allude to the other districts around us, like, doing headless?
I, I believe central Noble is, West Noble is not, because they could not come to an agreement. Um, I don't know where, did I say that right, West Noble? But as far as I know, those, them all of them I know of right now, I really haven't talked to the other superintendents about it 'cause I do meet monthly with the Noble County superintendents and that was a lot of conversation we had.
More about liability during the time?
Well, they're on their time, 'cause we can't have any part of it. So they're responsible for those students during that timeframe. And we gotta remember, the parents are giving the permission for that to happen, so.
And it has no instructional time at the end?
It's not, we're not supposed to be blown out of instructional time. So if we, we can only put library and it's thirty-five minutes long, that concludes travel time. And to get there back and do whatever they need to do during that thirty-five minute time.
So on the two that need transportation, if we can't use public funds, does that mean they?
They have to transport, yes.
They have to transport, they, they can't do a reimbursement.
We can't use our buses or anything in the vehicle, so.
So that's clear that they transport?
They're aware of this, they've been doing that in a lot of their schools, so.
Anything else?
Not for discussion, man.
Board, yeah? Takes us to late items, we do have one late item. We received, uh, earlier today, a request from the boys' basketball team for an overnight trip to, I believe it's, um, Carhol or West, somewhere in the world.
And/or Westville, just one of those down there.
And, uh, basically it's a gathering of numerous high school teams from across the state, as I understand it on Reddit. And, uh, they have been invited down to participate and play some teams that maybe they wouldn't have a normal chance to play. Kinda see where they stack up, it is overnight. I believe, uh, they'll take care of the snacks and the food services, breakfast is at the hotel. And I think the boosters pay for the other part of the, the, is that correct?
I don't, I don't think it says who pays, it just says how much it is. What did you buy again?
Okay, so.
You did a fine job, it's probably gonna be a good job.
And with that number that proposing that, I mean, we lost some crap.
Driven by, oh, I wish you were, not, not by a student, I would say.
Hopefully not.
You both not?
No. Any questions about that, folks? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve that request.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Pine, seconded by Mr. Trulow, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries seven zero. That takes us then to comments from the superintendent.
Well, golly gosh, there are so many great things happening right now. I'm just, I'm gonna go on kind of a little bit of spiel here, but appreciate everybody that spoke tonight, the positive comments. Um, it's good to hear those, you know, this year it's very difficult for, for educators and, um, we're all just exhausted, worn out, and it's really nice to see your expectations here and what we're doing, great data and everything, so thank you for that. Um, just appreciate that we, all the people that, um, attended our town hall meetings, our leaders, our board members who participated in that. Um, the, the intent of, behind the whole thing is so that we can improve. We know that we're not perfect, um, and we're always looking at ways to improve and enhance the, uh, East Noble School Corporation. So we appreciate that. Um, the pertinent questions that came up over that will be posted on the FAQ. Um, and so keep your eye on that, 'cause they, they will come up. Um, we also wanna congratulate our East Noble Teacher of the Year, Denise Pashi, or Ashi, I always say it wrong. Um, but she will compete in the state competition, um, over the summer, so we're very excited for her. Uh, thank you to Mrs. Erickson and, um, our Southside staff for hosting this evening. Appreciate your presentation, it's always great to see the kids grow, and I keep, have such positive results there. Um, also, I'm gonna take the time to congratulate Melissa Gibson, our HR Director for winning the Indiana Association of State Business Official Support Staff Member of the Year. So she was number one in the state, that's pretty awesome. And then our very own Mr. Leach over there, he was the Region Three winner for the school business official. But congratulations to both of them, they are both well-deserved recognitions to them. As stated earlier, graduation is coming right around the corner, June second. Um, there has been some people asking if you have to get tickets, and there are no tickets, you just come in and enjoy the program. But, um, we wish our seniors all the best, we're very excited for their futures. And, um, sad to see him go, but we're really excited about their future plans, heavy to fruition, so, yay, our graduates, yay. Um, I have to bring this up because this has been something that has kinda been a negative for a while. But our Student Voice Committee met, um, this past week, and there was just such an overwhelming response from our students. They were very excited when we had them all together, um, about the food improvement. And I know you may not think that's a big deal, but to our kids, it's a big deal. And, um, our, our food service director, Roger, uh, Europe and his staff, they worked really, really hard. They've done a lot of taste tests with kids, trying to get fresh fruit items. I guess that's the one thing they were going, ooh, you bring fruit! I mean, I was just very excited to listen to him, get, you know, thrilled about it. So, um, just had to bring that up, but that's one of the things that, um, you know, we always try to get that areas of growth and they worked really hard and because of listening to their voice, that, that has made it happen. So they're very excited about the food now, so. Um, and I did go down and share that with Roger right away, and he was like high-fiving me and everything else. I was very excited as well. But, uh, we're very appreciative for all of his work with that. I also have heard we might have a new hire in our audience. If you are one of our new hires for tonight, could you stand up? Dr. Carol, I'll get her right now. Um, would you like to introduce her?
Sure, yeah, this is Carol Wood, she's coming to us from DeKalb, and she's gonna teach kindergarten. I'll be sent out.
Go ahead.
Teresa was saying, so as our students leave, um, on Wednesday, the last day of school, and teachers start nation upgrades and tie in their classrooms, a lot of work is just beginning. With summer school, camps, uh, maintenance, uh, work orders, uh, summer projects. My issue's talking about food service. Last year, our food service department served over thirty thousand meals just over the summer, um, which is absolutely amazing. I didn't bring the details with me, but they are in all of our buildings, they will be online. Uh, they'll be serving meals again this year, breakfast and lunch, um, and they'll be delivering to, to locations. We have new locations this year, uh, as well as some of the old. I know we're getting into liato, uh, this, this coming summer, so hopefully those in the wild area, uh, take advantage of that so we can continue that service. Uh, Roger has a goal of forty thousand meals this summer, so hopefully we can, we can hit that, try and keep, keep our kids fed. Uh, we're also gonna be using our transportation staff as well, uh, and some of our buses to help deliver some of those meals. Uh, so it looks a little better than using just a minivan and pass some, pass some food out of the bag with the minivan. So, uh, we're really excited about it, there's a lot of hard work coming up. Uh, and, and, uh, I just, I, I hope that, uh, our families take advantage of that summer young program because, uh, we're excited about it, so.
Comments or questions from the board?
Hi, Von, um, I just wanna shout out to the hard work that everybody put into the, uh, barn, the proof. to the Barnes, the approval of the ALCAID. That, in my opinion, on the infrastructure in the corporation, we're always going to be looking forward. I know that the tax base, you know, we could reduce taxes, but that tax base is important to maintain so that we don't spend more money later. And I think that's, that's imperative that we're doing that. Otherwise, we don't want to throw money at that ever. But at the same time, I don't believe we are. But at the same time, you know, we're going to be spending more money if we're leveraging maintaining and building for the future, so good work.
Good thing those Southside results still just happened. Lots of hard work, so thanks to the Southside folks. I don't know if you saw, bus inspections are, they had that. I think we've gone from 55 buses not needing inspection 10, 12 years ago to just very, very minor things that are correct the same days. Kudos to them. And then lastly, you know, it's always rewarding as a former educator myself, it's always rewarding to see your former students be successful. And Brian was one of my former students. And he spent the best three years of his life with ours. Yeah. But it's always, it's, it's really rewarding to see your, your kid be successful. So kudos to you, Brian. Thanks for making that.
Speaking of transportation, I should have said a little more about that. But a bus inspection, a fleet of 55 vehicles, the state comes in and inspects annually buses that are older than 12 years, they get inspected twice a year. It used to be towards the end of summer, so we had all summer long to make the necessary repairs and maintenance. Since we've been in our new facility, we can maintain them a lot easier, a lot quicker. We've established a better process. The state has recognized that. So the state police come in and inspect our vehicles for us. They actually, last year, I think last year or the first year, they came in and asked us to do it in May. And so we started doing it in May, but I think we don't, we don't have the summer to work on these vehicles, so we're a little nervous. But we did it very well in May. They're just like, hey, you guys did such a great job. Let's, let's do it towards the end of April so we can get out and do the other schools during the summer. So they keep moving it up on us. But kudos to our mechanics, our drivers for reporting issues or meet the leaders quickly and efficiently, as well as our directors. Because without a strong leader, none of it is possible. So I really thank the transportation department for all that they do for the safety of our kids and maintaining our food, so.
Anything else aboard?
I'd like to say thank you to Ryan for all his years with Unite Trax.
It's 11 years, 10 more years?
Unite My Trax, but he's been with them since 2014.
10 years. Good for all kids. All right, with that said, we will be adjourned into executive session to discuss personnel, employee evaluations, and school board training. So with that said, our next meeting is June 19th at the administration office. This meeting is now adjourned.